Good evening. Welcome to the North Borough School Committee Overmeeting Monday, January 6, 2020. Happy New Year. We'll open the meeting this evening with action on the minutes. We have two minutes in your packet, one for open meeting minutes of December 4th and the executive session minutes from December 4th.
I move to approve the open meeting minutes of December 4th, 2019. And I also move to approve and retain the executive session minutes of December 4th, 2019.
I second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor? The motion passes. Next item on the agenda, we have some new business is a budget list update.
So just a quick update on the Student Opportunity Act. Obviously, it's an important information as we are in the budget process. A couple of items that we've learned. The first is the Chapter 70 Funding Formul. They did add a "hold harmless" provision in the bill, so we will get -- the aid that we'll receive will be no less than the aid that we received last year, which is always nice to know. And the other piece of information is special education circuit breaker where transportation is reimbursed. That will be implemented over four years. And next year, DESI will reimburse 25% of eligible costs. So that's good news for us in terms of the budget process. In terms of charter school tuition costs, there are no changes. And just one last note that this April, we'll be required to submit a evidence-based three-year plan to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, which is timely since we're working on our strategic plan. So that should align nicely with that expectation. So more information to follow as the governor releases his House Two budget, so we'll keep you posted.
Is the plan for four years from now to have all special education transportation covered in reimbursement?
As part of the circuit breaker, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
And the budget, they said you're not going to receive less, but we don't know if we're getting more yet.
Correct. So we've used last year's circuit breaker and Chapter 70 funding as our --
I beg your pardon.
The next item on the agenda is digitation of school committee meeting materials and warrants. Discussion?
So I know we've had a few conversations around moving away from paper packets and moving to all digital school committee packets and as well as looking at allowing people to sign the warrants electronically. So that's something that South Borough, I mentioned last meeting, is exploring and is piloting. So it might be something that the North Borough School Committee wants to consider. I will say that the pros are that it does take quite a bit of time for the central office to create these packets. So it's not just materials, but it's also people's time and energy. The con is that it is nice to have a packet in front of you during a meeting, so it -- but it's the will of the committee in terms of how it would like to move forward.
Would packets be available if we did choose as a committee to go digital? You know how they have like the few packets in the back? Would those still exist or no?
So we would --
Or how could we?
We would create a few packets for any audience members who didn't have access to a computer.
Okay.
So we'd make that available. We also could make certain documents available, certain budget presentations and so forth available.
Prior to the meeting?
To the committee, actually.
Okay.
There are some documents that are very difficult to read electronically, so that's something we could also entertain as well. So we have maximum flexibility. We did check with Attorney General's Office around electronically signing the warrants, and we are allowed to do that. So we're looking at some tools to be able to do that and the costs. So more information to follow.
Hopefully minimal.
Yes.
But that is definitely, it'll save a lot of time and
Exactly.
Resources. So I think that is definitely a good idea. Did we know when we were thinking of maybe if this school, we need to vote on it, or is it just something kind of like consensus to start and pilot?
Yeah, I think we don't need to vote. It would be the will of the committee and just pilot and deciding when you would like to run the pilot.
I'd like to try right away, February if possible.
I'd be up for that. I think piloting's a good idea.
Test it out in February, see how it goes, and if it, you know, we like it or don't like it, then we can either go back to paper or push it for another month or so.
The one thing that we could provide too is a copy, a hard copy of the agenda.
That would be great.
The one comment that I have heard is just people like to take notes, and it's hard to take notes electronically. So that would be one place where a committee member could take notes if she chose.
And would you be using Melican iPads?
Yes, we could.
Or?
Chromebooks.
Chromebooks?
Yep.
All right.
So if you needed a Chromebook or a device, we would have that set up and ready for you when you were ready.
So the next item on the agenda is subcommittee updates.
So we have had several subcommittees, primarily the Operational Budget Subcommittee, met twice. Once on December 3rd, right before December 4th meeting, and then again this January 2nd, last week. And basically, the Operational Budget Subcommittee is really a place where we present drafts of budgets. We have conversations about the budget, and it's really a planning session. Those meetings are open meetings, and the public is always welcome to attend. And we've also had, we had scheduled a budget, a policy Subcommittee meeting, but that was and has been rescheduled to a later date in January, so that did not take place.
Due to quorum?
Due to a quorum. And then we've had a lot of, we've had three strategic planning meetings with educators around the portrait of a graduate. We have, we also had the Financial Trend Monitoring Meeting on December 12th, where the town administrator gives the landscape of the finances for the town, which is always helpful. So a lot of subcommittees have been happening in the month of December. And I'm not sure if there's anything any of the committee members would like to add.
Yeah, I think that covers most of them, or all of them.
I know one of the things I've been going to is the PTO Superintendent Advisory Committee type thing, and that's been helpful to go to also to hear from the other schools and the PTOs, and it's been nice.
And then do we have anything coming up? So that's good for the, what we did last month, so the ones coming up we have?
So we do have some strategic planning sessions coming up, actually, tomorrow night, from Algonquin Regional High School, area just library from 4:00 to 5:00. And the community is welcome to attend, but it's the portrait of a graduate. It's part of our strategic planning session. And there is another session on Thursday, January 9th, again at Algonquin in the library from 4:00 to 5:30. And then again on January 14th at Algonquin from 6:30 to 8 o'clock, another strategic planning session. And we have a, we also have a school start time task force meeting on January 15th, I believe.
Great. All right. Sounds good. The next item on the agenda is approval of grants and donations.
So Z School received a grant. I don't know if Amy would like to speak to it.
Sure. There were two grants for $500 apiece from Harvard Pilgrim. Prior to me arriving at Z, these grants have been coming in from Harvard Pilgrims, from some past parents, Amanda Clark and Brianna Rotocco. And these two particular grants have been earmarked for. One was for the Mark presentation that we did previously for bullying prevention, and the second one is social-emotional learning. Last year, they funded zones of regulations, texts, and posters for all teachers in the building. And this year, we're looking at pricing out kind of cooldown zones for as many classrooms that we can do, beanbag chairs, kind of some calming devices in the classroom that go along with zones of regulation. So very kind gestures.
Do you vote for that?
Yes. So I move to approve two Harvard Pilgrim Community Spirit 911 mini-grants in the amount of 500 each to Z School.
I'll second the motion.
Please extend our thanks to both Amanda and Briani said
Thank you.
For the grants. It sounds like it will really help out those programs at our schools. Thank you.
Yeah, very nice.
Yeah, I was just wondering, in the past, have you been using the grants in the same way for social and emotional learning, or have they been used in multiple different ways?
I can only speak to last year. Last year, it was one $500 grant, and it had been previously earmarked by Sue the year before. What Harvard does is reach out to you and said, you know, "We have this matching we can do with our company and ourselves, and we would like to do this for Z School. What would you like to do for?" So Sue had come up with that the year before. I was late in responding this year, and we quickly talked on the phone, and they said, you know, "Would you like to earmark it again for social-emotional for, you know, for different reasons?" And then I said, "Yes, that would be great." So we went with the Mark bullying, which we weren't able to bring in last year for financial reasons. And sometimes when we do these one-time grants, we get something in and we can't grow that. So this was a nice opportunity to take the zones of regulation and kind of grow that to more kind of safe places in the classroom for students.
Great, thank you.
So all those in favor? Great.
Thank you very much.
The next items we have on our agenda, we have no old business at this time, and then with the superintendent's report to the committee.
So in your packet is the enrollment report for as of December 16th, 2019. Highlighted in yellow are the classes that are capped. So as you can see, we have quite a few. We have 1,602 students as of December 16th. And then on the reverse side, we have our projections for FY '21. And I will note that it's too early to project kindergarten. CLC a discrepancy between the FY '21 projection and projections with MISTEC. So we're keeping an eye on that. Again, this is part of the budget process in terms of looking at our class sizes and making sure we maintain our class sizes within policy. And since the last report, we've added three new students to our K through eight enrollment. So next in your packet is the monthly general fund expenditure report as of December 31st, 2019. And I will let Becky speak to the report.
So as you can see on the front of the report, there were no significant variances from last month. According to, or tracking against last year, we're very comparable. Last year, at this time, we had 313,806 remaining on the bottom line, or 1.28% of the budget remaining, whereas this year, we have 437,643 dollars, or 1.76. So we're tracking pretty comparable, a little bit more on the bottom line, but we are confident we've been working very closely with Student Support Services, and we feel confident in the numbers going forward.
I move to approve the FY '20 monthly general fund expenditure report until audited.
I second the motion.
All those in favor? Great. Motion passes. Thank you.
So next in your packet are the FY '21 budget goals and the approved capital plan report that was approved as of 12/4, 2019, the last meeting. Next in your packet is the FY '21 budget calendar, and all of the meetings and collaborations that have taken place have been documented on our budget calendar. There's many more to follow. And then lastly, it's the presenting the FY '21 recommended budget presentation. So I will get up and shift places and the school committee and the community. We are a vision and mission-driven organization, so this is very important in terms of the budget process and the work that we do. Our vision talks about creating dynamic learning environments that inspires our students to think critically, solve problems, and engage in intellectual curiosity. In addition, our mission talks about creating exceptional educational experiences for every student in safe environments. So that is at the forefront of the work when we're creating the budget. So the budget is a process. As we close out a fiscal year and launch, or launching another year, we quickly engage in thinking about the next fiscal year as well. So it begins in September. We'll review the budget goals as a collaborative leadership team to talk about what we want to try to accomplish in terms of the budget for the upcoming fiscal year. And this year, we added tours of the facilities. We toured Melican as well as Lincoln Street School. In October, we have essential meetings with the town administrator as well as a leadership team to really talk about the context of, in the landscape of the town's finances, as well as what we're trying to, what we're trying to accomplish as a leadership team. In November, the principals and the leadership and the directors submit their preliminary initial budgets to the central office, and those are the first budget runs that we start with. And also, those are the budgets that we begin the conversations around coming to a recommended budget this evening. And in December, we presented the preliminary budget to the school committee. And then this evening in January, it's hard to believe it's January, presenting the recommended budget, which was an important step in the process. And then in March, February, March, meeting with North Borough Appropriations Committee, and then moving to the public hearing, and then the North Borough Town Meeting, which is on Monday, April 27th, 2020. So one important point that to make is that we are, this process is goal-oriented, and the school committee starts the fiscal process early on in the year by establishing budget goals, working in collaboration with the leadership team. So our goals have been to maintain the high-quality staff and instructional programs and stay within our class size policy, I-240. It's been a goal to meet the needs of all learners with instructional classroom models that are research-based and reflect best practices, to expand professional development for all teachers. And last year, we added an emphasis on multisensory-based reading programs and social-emotional help in all children. Another budget goal is to maintain the district's capital assets with a special emphasis on safety and energy, to ensure an educational program that is consistent with the Massachusetts' curriculum frameworks, and to prepare students for success on district, state, and local assessments, to make sure that we are, our students have access and our staff have access to appropriate and sufficient educational technology. And lastly, to implement the transition plan to a tuition-free, full-day kindergarten program, which we will be entering year two of the implementation plan. So those are the budget goals that have driven the conversations around this budget. This year, some of the budget variables that we began the year not knowing, which can make budgeting challenging, we are entering into contract negotiations. This is year three of a three-year contract, so that is a budget variable that we've been mindful of as we've moved through this process. Earlier, I spoke about the Chapter 70 funding and the new legislation, the Student Opportunity Act, and waiting to get more information about how that will impact the budget and the finances North Borough will receive. This year also, we are in the year five of a five-year legal services contract, so we are in the process of renewing a legal services contract, and that is, again, an unknown at this point. And lastly, we're in year five of a five-year bus transportation contract, and we'll be going out to bid for transportation services shortly. And again, that's a variable that we do not know at this time in terms of what the percent increase will be. So this is, this slide is an overview of the budget process. I think it's important to show the community and the school committee where we started from, from the initial requests. So the principals and the directors work very closely with their faculty and staff, talking about what they want to accomplish with this fiscal year budget without a lot of constraints. So if money was not an issue, what would we like to accomplish? So when we took all of those requests, the budget came in at $26,542,739, or a 6.48% increase. So working very closely with the town administrator, we do have a budget range that, to come in at, and that was between a 2.5 and a 3.5%. So again, that was not on target, but we knew that, and it's an important exercise to go through because if you never have conversations about what could be, you're always just continuing with the status quo. From that initial budget, the leadership team came together and identified $618,653 worth of reductions from the initial budget that was proposed. And last month, a preliminary budget was presented of $25,924,086, or 3.99%. In the month of December, the leadership team and working in collaboration with the school committee, we were able to reduce the budget, that preliminary budget by $209,669, to come to a recommended budget of $25,714,417 for a 3.15% increase. And I will go over the budget drivers and the offsets for that recommended budget. So in terms of the budget reductions, one of the budget reduction areas is special education programming. We're not actually reducing programming. We're actually looking at programming to meet the needs of students and making some adjustments. So students who may have gone out of district were actually able to provide their services in their home community with their peers, and that's been some great work in collaboration with the building principals and the Student Support Services team. We've had some staffing shifts and line item reductions. So there are some staffing shifts with reductions, people shifting positions and so forth. And then we went line item by line item to look at five-year trends and averages, and we were able to come up with $180,653 in terms of reductions. And then lastly, staffing reductions totaling $292,088. And I'll speak more specifically around those reductions. But it is important to note that as we look at enrollment trends, our enrollment is contracting. We are seeing a declining enrollment, and as you see a declining enrollment, it's important that, you know, we adjust accordingly in terms of staffing and the resources that we, that we need. So this is, this is enrollment comparison from FY '20 to FY '21. So we are seeing a decrease of 72 students in the fiscal year '21 budget as it stands right now, which is important to note. This is comparison, it's our FY '20 to FY '21, and as you can see, in grade seven and grade eight, we're seeing a reduction, significant reduction of students specifically in grade seven. So it's something that we're keeping in our eye on in terms of where that enrollment is shifting. It is also important to note that K is not on this chart, again, because it's very difficult to project at this time. But I will say, we projected last year 154 new K students, and we received a total of 177 when we opened our school in the fall, which was, required us to add another kindergarten section. So again, it's something for us to keep an eye on. Kindergarten enrollment began, or registration began, began, or begins this week. So as that unfolds, we'll have more information. So in terms of the offsets for staffing, so we are looking at 2.3 FTE educators for a total of $173,893. So again, we're looking at trying to look at retirements and looking at staffing movement. And we're also recommending educator support professionals, one per building, of a total of $118,195. And the Student Support Services team and principals have looked at staffing and the current cohort of students, and we feel comfortable that we'll be able to provide the supports and resources needed at a high level and not impact student learning. So the staffing, the budget offset is, totals $292,088. And again, those specific positions have not been identified. It's too early in the process to identify specific positions. So the budget drivers for fiscal year '21, we have seen an increased cost of special education placements, actually specifically a shift to our collaboratives. We've seen an increase of students who are going to our collaborative programs, which actually is a much more affordable cost to the district and excellent programming versus some of the programs that are private. So that's been a nice shift. But we have seen an increase of $163,879 in collaborative placements. At the combined meeting in December, the school committee saw our presentation on the Student Information System upgrade, so that reflects an increase of $22,236. And again, that is the system that houses all of our student data. It allows us to create reports and so forth. In this Student Information System upgrade will also allow for us to collect information digitally versus collecting information via forms and so forth. Digital resources represents a $25,067 increase. That is due to a shift in the history and social science curriculum framework, as well as our licenses for two of our math programs have sunsetted, and we need to renew those licenses for this upcoming fiscal year. The total contractual obligations and line item increases represents $474,677. The total contractual obligations and line item increases represents $474,677. And lastly, one of the budget drivers is implementing year two of tuition-free kindergarten, which is $100,000, which was year two of the implementation plan. So the FY '21 recommended budget really reflects the level of services budget with growth and targeted areas. And the total FY '21 budget is $25,714,417, or a recommended budget increase of $785,859, or a 3.15% increase. So some of the growth areas that we're seeing in this budget is implementing year two of tuition-free, full-day kindergarten, upgrading our student information system, upgrading some of our instructional resources, and also adding some translation services, increasing diverse population. And then lastly, I just want to quickly highlight the model transition to tuition-free, full-day kindergarten. The row highlighted in yellow reflects FY '21, so staying true to our plan, this budget, and if this budget is voted, we will have 77% of our kindergarten budget on operation, our operational budget. And we're confident that as we look to FY '22, that most likely we'll be able to complete the implementation plan a year earlier than expected if our trends continue as we foresee them, so, which is great news. So that is the FY '21 recommended budget, and I'd be happy to answer any questions from the school committee or the audience.
I was wondering if you could speak a little bit more about the reduction in educator support professionals, and if you could maybe paint a picture about how special education has changed in our school district over the last few years and how this would impact the classrooms.
Sure. So I'll start with how it's changed over the past five years. We've, over the past five years, the past five budgets have significantly invested in student support services. Each of our schools now has a full-time school psychologist, a behavioral specialist, and most recently, we added special education teachers to each of the four of our elementary schools, with a thinking that rather than using ESPs, we actually were going to have educators delivering services. So we've really expanded the student support services that our, that our schools offer. We also have looked very closely at how we're using our educational support specialists. They do a tremendous job in terms of providing supports and services. But what we've seen is we've added positions, but we haven't reduced the number of ESPs, and we think that it's an opportunity to be able to do that. So one per school is the recommendation. And again, that's looking at student caseloads, that's talking with principals about how to deliver services, that's working with our student support services staff. And we think that there won't be any degradation services to our students because of this impact, because we've invested in resources over the past five years.
Great.
And Maria, I'm not sure if you would like to add anything to that.
No, you said it very well. I did think that our ESPs are valued. As Superintendent Monchino said, we need, we are looking at the utilization of our ESPs in the classroom, and we, the whole point about adding special education teachers was to get specially-designed instruction in the inclusion in the classrooms as opposed to more pull-out. So that's why we made the shift last year.
Thank you.
And just a comment about, although it's five positions, our educator support professionals, we tend to see a high turnover rate because most of our ESP, or many of our ESPs are seeking educator jobs. So every year, we see a significant turnover in terms of those positions. So we're not anticipating that anyone will have to lose a position because of that reduction.
Great, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. It looks like we're right on target. It's great that we can collaborate so closely with the town and all the administrators, hard work, and we get in that target range, and it's looking very good.
And I'll just comment too on, when we're looking at our pre-K through eighth budget, it also is essential that we look at our nine through 12 budget as well. And, you know, it looks, in terms of enrollment trends at the high school level, it looks like that there is an increase in enrollment in Northborough in terms of percentage of students who are enrolled at ARHS for FY '21 compared to Southborough, which impacts the overall assessment to each of the towns. So we are anticipating an increase dollar amount in terms of the assessment to Northborough. So one of the ways we look at it is we look at the total dollars invested by Northborough from pre-K through eight, pre-K through 12, to try to balance off some of the increased enrollment at the high school. So that's one of the things that will be important to look at when we present the regional budget in this upcoming month and for the region.
Great, thank you. We're not at this time. Policy development at this time, and then we'll move into audience sharing. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to share this evening?
Okay, so we're back at it now. First full week. It seems like we've been off for a while, and last week being two short days. So we're right back into it now. This week at Lincoln Street School, we have kindergarten registration Wednesday through Friday. On January 16th, we kick off our school-wide Read-A-Thon, and our PTO hosts an event for cocoa and cookies for the community. On January 22nd, we will have our winter concert. Fifth-grade band and chorus will be performing. And on January 31st, teachers are preparing to send out our report cards to families.
Three E's done last week as well with those two days, and we're back at it as well with a full week, we hope, no snow. We are kicking off this week our enrichment offerings to students. So we have STEM, yoga, and a writers' club that will meet, and so all of those are full, and we're very excited to bring those after-school opportunities to students. We also have our band and chorus concert that we're looking forward to on the 29th. Our fourth graders will engage in a simulation of understanding our differences, which gives them experiences, understanding what it's like to have different disabilities and walk in those shoes. And that's always a favorite activity that the students are highly engaged in and get a lot out of. And at Proctor, we kicked off a five-part staff meeting series training with an outside presenter, Margaret Lattis, and she is talking to us about trauma-informed practices and care, as well as understanding behavior as a form of communication. And that was excellent today, so we're looking forward to her visits in February, March, and April as well.
Yes. At Z-School, we are also participating in the Understanding Our Differences this week with our fourth grade. So the fourth graders are looking forward to that. On the 17th, we have a Jump for Heart. We're working in partnership with the American Heart Foundation. Students are involved in receiving pledges from family and friends, and will spend about 45 minutes within their PE session on the 17th, jumping and raising funds for the American Heart Association. On the 22nd, our PTO is bringing in a Pottery Night into Z-School. That will be a family event as well as a fundraiser for Z. And at the end of the month, on the 30th, we will have our winter concert as well for band and chorus.
At Peaslee School, we also have kindergarten registration this week, Wednesday through Friday. This week, our first graders will be participating in a Discovery Museum enrichment program on sound, and fifth graders will enjoy the annual visit from StarLab on Wednesday of this week. Our fourth graders will also do Understanding Our Differences on the 16th, and on January 23rd, we will have the fifth-grade band and chorus concert at Peaslee School.
Melican already had our winter concerts. We had them in December, the 10th, 11th, and 12th. They were all well-attended. It's always really nice to see the kids, how much they grow over even just the first couple months of school. So Dave Dackel, Rebecca McCarr, Angela Haynes working with the kids. It's just amazing to see, again, very well-attended, and we thank Algonquin for the use of their auditorium. We also, before vacation, held auditions for our school musical, which is Frozen Junior. That will be, that will be in production March 27th and 28th. And again, Algonquin is letting us use their facilities. That's always really exciting. We had, we, over 100 students are participating in that. We did have to cut a couple of students, which is hard, but we're excited about that. Many, many kids are involved in that. Our basketball season is well underway. We had two games scheduled before vacation. One was a snow day, so we had one, but we've got two this week. Wachusett Ski Club begins tomorrow for students. Our eighth graders are, they visited the high school in the fall, and they visited Assabett as well. And course selection, the process is beginning with teachers. There's a parent night scheduled at the beginning of February, so that is in process as well. So lots going on.
Can I give a quick update for school start time? So we are meeting this week, I think, or next week, soon. So we are looking to get more information out to the community for school start time. We have informational brochures. We're looking to ask local community shops, coffee shops, places like that, if we can put our brochures in there, places, place of business. So that's sort of where we are. And we also have an upcoming music task force meeting as well, as we continue to look at our curriculum. So more to come from that.
Master plan has rounded out quite nicely. They have their last public presentation in December, and the next steps now is for the planning board to review and adopt.
So I tried to convince Dr. Barnhart not to retire, but she has this big smile on her face that won't go away. But the Peaslee Principal Search Committee has formed and will begin its work trying to find a person to fill Dr. Barnhart's shoes, which will not be easy. So more information to follow as the process unfolds.
So as we're going through audience sharing...
I did realize that we forgot to go back to the budget agenda. We forgot to go and have a, was it in my notes to have a vote on the recommended budget? So if that is a will of the committee to do that tonight?
Because it wasn't on this, it wasn't on the agenda for tonight to vote on it. It was on that, you know, the master thing with the calendar. It was for next month, does that?
It can be a will of the committee.
It's a will of the committee.
All right. What do you think?
I don't know, I mean...
Do you have any strong opinions? Like voting that way? The only pro to voting it now is, I don't believe we need to present it again if we need to correct.
No, I mean, I think that...
Why, otherwise we have to present it again?
Technically, we wouldn't have to present it again. You know, we do have two committee members who are not here this evening, so...
Yeah.
I'm just looking at the budget calendar to make sure that...
Yeah, that's what, the budget calendar, it said, it said February. Well, at least the... This one said vote and distribution. So...
All right, all right. I mean... We'll go on to the next item on the agenda, which is personal items. It's distribution and the personal report. It's in our packet. Again, we're sad to see it go, but it's not a good one out there. And the next thing we have is communications with the 2019 Anna M. Seaver Awards.
So in your packet are the Anna M. Seaver Award recipients for 2019-20. This year, we had five faculty members who received the award. Lauren Brosh at Proctor School, Sandra, Sandy Bunzick at Lincoln Street, Mary Lincoln at Z-School, Christina Seite at Melican, and Bridget West at Peaslee. So they were well-deserving of the acknowledgement, and they had a nice brief ceremony the Friday before we went on vacation, so. And then in your packet is the financial trend monitoring report for fiscal year 2020. And again, it's the presentation that Town Administrator John Kader presented on the 12th, which has a tremendous amount of information, really helps kind of drive the financial planning for the town, and it helps us as we move through the budget process as well.
So future agenda items. We are looking forward to a food services update. Food served on the trial parcel. Budget, vote the budget in for what we will put forward towards our town meeting. Do we have any school improvement plans, or are we all through that cycle?
I think we're good for next. No new plans.
All right. So approvals of bills and tables, and then we will need to move into executive session.
I make a motion to move into executive session to discuss the strategies with respect to collective bargaining due to the chair's determination that the discussion regarding this matter in an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the position of the committee, with no intent to return to open meeting.
I second the motion. Does your role call? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, we move to executive session. Good night.
Thank you.